Good morning, everyone. It's eight thirty-two on Tuesday, July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectment of the Town in Canaan. It's a hybrid meeting and first we have to amend the agenda to add two items. One is the you have it here in front of us, the New Canaan Urgent Assessment Program Agreement. And secondly, is an executive session on a strategy negotiations with respect to pending claims involving the Congressional Church in Canaan. I move we add these two items then take them when they come up. Second?
Second, just comment that but with with the possible approval of the agreement after executive session.
Correct.
Right. Okay. Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, again, this is a so the minutes for the prior two meetings, one was an executive session and one was a special meeting on the anyway, any comments or corrections on the two sets of minutes?
None here.
I move your producer both minutes. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, public comments? I don't see anyone in the room here. Anybody on Zoom land? This is a hybrid meeting. Members of the public are welcome to provide comments on agenda topics, schedule for review and or vote. Comments, maybe submit electronically if they're sent to B O S distribution at newcanonct.gov and we'll read them before the end of the meeting. That brings us to Chief Bassett. Good morning.
Good morning, all. The fire department has a few requests for purchases. First one is Firematic Supply for the purchase of six sets of firefighter turnout gear. This is going to be used between the twenty-three and twenty-four capital budgets and they actually is for six sets of volunteer gear that the members just completed their basic firefighter training for seventeen thousand one ninety seventy-five. Do you want to do them all?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, second one is for A F C Urgent Care, which is our medical physical provider. Uh, this unfortunately is for twenty-two physicals in two thousand twenty-three. Fiscal year, um, we had a little trouble with our with billing through the vendor. They've changed hands a couple of times over the last twelve months and they billed us completely at the end of the year in June. Uh, and that's a request for twelve thousand two hundred eighty dollars. Uh, it was money that was originally budgeted uh, in the twenty-three fiscal year. New England uniform.
Good question. Are those are full-time?
Uh, both full-time and
Volunteer.
Yes, full-time and um, volunteer physicals. Uh, they're required to do it annually.
Yeah. Thank you.
A New England uniform, we'd like to open a blanket up to twenty-eight thousand dollars for contractual uh, uniforms for career staff. This is available on the F Y twenty-four operating budget. And the last one is our dispatching services for F Y twenty-four. We've switched to Fairfield Regional Communication Center. Uh, and they're they're probably going to bill earlier than Fairfield was. So we're just we're asking to put the um, request in now for when the um, when the bill for seventy-eight thousand comes in this fiscal year. Those are my four requests.
Could I just can't? And are these all budgeted? Is the A F C uh? Is that a transfer to Port of Fame?
What's that?
Or you just lower in twenty-four?
Well, we paid some of them were um are we probably paid some of them of somehow these, the way they budget, the way they build. This was the remainder of twenty-three for fiscal year twenty-three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any questions?
None.
I move we approve the four items as presented by the chief. Second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be have a great day.
Good.
Okay. Greg, you're out there on Zoom?
Now you can hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, the video is pixelated, but we can try it. Here we go. Here I am.
You're up, Greg.
Okay, uh, this is a a case where the the state of Connecticut is asking for the first electman to be authorized to apply for and ultimately receive a grant. Should we be awarded a grant? Uh, so that's what we're asking you to do authorize the first electman to apply and do whatever is necessary to ultimately receive a grant award. This is the State Department of Transportation Community Connectivity Grant. Uh, and I, of course, I want to thank Tiger Man, the department head on this grant project for providing all of the details of the project. This would uh, this would pay for the installation of a sidewalk on Lakeview Ave from Main Street to Millport. Uh, it's a project that I think the town has been talking about for for years and we found a grant opportunity which I I think our project meets their priorities very well. Uh, they they want, it's about connectivity, number one. It's called the Connectivity Grant. And so we are, this would connect uh, Millport, Mill Affordable Housing Apartments to Main Street. It would connect Main Street to Millport uh, Park or is it Mill Park? Where the pond is and all that where it's nicely, uh, it's been recently renovated and upgraded. It would connect to Lakeview Cemetery. It would connect to the sidewalk that's already there that connects to Avalon, Canaan Parish, and ultimately East uh, East School. So, um, it's safety, access, connections, and equity. Are there priorities of this grant? And I believe we we match those very well in this case. So, um, asking for your okay to authorize the uh, application and acceptance.
Well, is this and you just added and acceptance? Is this an acceptance?
This is it. Uh, they they worded so that they they would like the authorization for acceptance should we be awarded. So it has not been awarded. We just applied. They want to have the authorization on the file so that in the case of an award, there wouldn't be any holdup and they want to be assured that the town is okay with this project.
Hi Greg, are you okay with this project? I mean, I I thought this was just the application, so.
Yes, I'm perfectly fine with it. This is uh, this is actually what we plan to do. So uh, the estimate of construction is based upon um, our feeling of what the what the cost would be. And um, I think it's a really great project for this type of grant. So I think Greg said a nice job putting together and hopefully we get it and we won't have to pay for it.
Any questions?
So this is Tiger.
Mm-hmm.
The entire amount or expected spend is three twenty-five, six eighty, right?
Yeah, I I based it off of um, existing bids plus a little. Um, you know, since it'll be a a next year build, as far as the the bidding process goes, we'd be looking to do this in April of next year. Because by the time that the grant comes in, it'll be late this season. Um, so we'd be looking at next year for it. Yeah, I use I base it off of what we've seen historically, historical pricing for uh, this type of work throughout town.
Okay, good.
If we didn't get the grant, would we still be going forward with the project? Is this is this in the budget planned for twenty twenty-four?
No, it's in the budget for twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Yeah. So yeah, this is, this is actually um, one, one portion that was listed in the the twenty-fourteen P O C D as a connection point. Um, so uh, it was, it was detailed out at that point in time and as as you might recall, we're trying to fill in all those gaps from the twenty-fourteen P O C D on the on the sidewalk map. This is one of them.
So if we get this money, how does that impact the budget? Twenty-four.
Yeah, plenty of other work to do. So it would help, but it would just shorten timeframe down on the on years out, not necessarily uh, in the coming years.
Thank you.
Uh, Tiger, does this involve federal bidding requirements?
There are certain requirements associated with it. Yeah, it's different than the lotsip if that's what you're, you know, looking towards, but there are bidding requirements that are associated with it, but nothing that we uh, we don't currently do at present.
Federal, not federal, I don't think, Tiger.
No, it's all state requirement, but well, but there are federal laws associated with it as far as as far as labor wage and things of that nature. So there's, there's a lot of other things associated with it, but it's all state requirements, no federal requirements.
For the questions? I move we approve this request. We'll dispense with the reading of the resolution, but we'll put that in the minutes that uh, authorizing the application and acceptance of this uh, proposed Connectivity Grant with the D O T. For three hundred twenty-five thousand six hundred eighty dollars. Uh, Kathy seconds, further discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I T. Mr. Kaiser.
Morning.
Not as pretty, never is. So the Information Technology Department would uh, like to venture into a contract with Presidio to purchase um, a day, excuse me, Dell V X rail. It's a new server system, physical box. We have three of these. This, this one is when we first started the uh, virtualization project, it's six years plus. It'll probably be close to seven when we get this installed and and redone. So the newer technology will help the desktops, um, which runs the P D Fire Police E M S, everybody. At thirty-five, eight seventy-one, uh, this has been budgeted. We saw it coming and for the three-year support contract is the eighty-eight hundred and that's directly to Dell itself. Um, we use Presidio, uh, not only because they are the the lowest for, because they're the largest Dell provider for virtualization and V M. Also because they give great support and service.
Questions?
Chris, where where's this housed? Where's the actual unit housed?
We have to go into executive session. No, it's downstairs.
Okay.
Yeah, the redundancy is is in another location. So we have complete redundancy to it.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Very happy to show it to you if you like before we tear it up.
Uh, no, that won't be necessary. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Now, for the questions, I move we approve this request from I T to enter into a contract with uh, Presidio for thirty-five thousand eight seventy-one twenty.
Second here.
And Dell Technologies for eight thousand eight seventy twenty-two. Uh, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Can I ask you, is the Wi-Fi down? Wi-Fi down? I can't seem to get onto Wi-Fi.
Good morning, Maria.
Good morning.
Well, there's still power out on South Avenue because the light's out. So does anybody have an update on what's going on with that? Kevin?
I thought it was restored Tucker by nine-thirty last night. It was out for an hour.
Weird. Thanks.
It's one oh six and south, the the light's still out.
Sorry.
Good morning, Maria.
Good morning. Good morning. Um, as part of the town's inflow and infiltration evaluation study, the town's consultant, A E COM, has prepared an outline for phase one of the sanitary sewer evaluation survey, the S S E S program to identify and locate potential areas of recorded stormwater inflow into the sanitary sewer system. The two thousand twenty-three S S E S program phase one work will involve public outreach, including public distribution describing the S S E S program, door hanger notification, and receiving and responding to phone calls from residents. Approximately one hundred and sixty thousand linear feet of the public sanitary sewer mains will be smoke tested, requiring selection of key manholes to blow non-toxic smoke and then obtaining G I S location and photographs of identified system defects based on visible smoke. As smoke testing should be performed during low groundwater conditions, the work is anticipated to be done late August this year. Once complete, sanitary sewer manhole inspections of approximately three hundred and ninety key manholes within the district will be performed, documenting manhole locations and size, surface and internal photographs, and connectivity between manholes, rim to invert depths, and any evidence of infiltration and inflow. As sewer manhole inspection should be performed during high groundwater conditions, that works as estimated to be done in the fall. Upon completion of fieldwork, A E COM will then prepare a draft report, which will include a summary of information gathered, recommendations to address potential defects in the system, and an engineer's estimate for a cost-effective analysis of potential repairs to the sanitary sewer system. A E COM will present the draft report to the town and then will prepare a final report once all comments have been received. A E COM will perform this S S E S program phase one work for a fee of three hundred and seventy thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars with a ten percent contingency of thirty thousand one hundred and seven dollars totaling four hundred and seven thousand eight hundred dollars. We recommend that the contract be awarded to A E COM and the funds are currently available.
Questions?
Is the first time we're doing this or when's the last time?
This is the first time in uh, the history that we're aware of, the recent history that we're doing the smoke test. Um, and it's non-toxic material that gets um, pushed into the system with blowers. And what happens is is that you'll visibly see smoke. All the residents will be notified a day or two beforehand that this is, you know, going to be occurring. Um, but if there are any
Smoke coming out of
There are any defects in their plumbing system. It what's nice is that it's actually um, helpful for the residents because they could find that they have either um, problems in their own plumbing system that, you know, um, um, that could be addressed that we would notice with the um, smoke purge test. So it might not necessarily be an area where excuse me, we're getting inflow or infiltration. So it might not impact our study, but it's good for the resident to know. They could have, you know, an easy dry um, uh, repair of their own main. So to help longevity. So it's actually, it's going to be both beneficial to us as a community to understand where there might be defects in our system, but it's also going to be a way to kind of raise a a little flag to residents if they have any problems.
Do they see the smoke come out of their sinks or I mean, where?
Usually it'd be like a basement drain or a garage drain. You know, that might be an old connection or an illegal connection or a cracked connection. Sometimes you can even see the smoke coming out of the ground. Because if there's any defects.
So Kathleen, if it's white smoke thing, thumbs up.
Okay, interesting.
Do we set off smoke detectors?
Yeah.
Um, so we, they, my understanding is that that's not the case, but it is a smoke that's in the house. So it could, and it's non-toxic. So if there's anyone who has respiratory problems, that's why we tell people ahead of time because they can either plan not, you don't have to be at home. No one's going to have to go into your home to see it because it'll, like I said, it'll be visible. It'll either be through the vents or um, through um, the ground or, you know, any penetrations. And they do them in small batches. So they are out there at the same time and they're photo inventorying everything and they're G I S locating everything. Um, and it's the first step of being able to, now that we have a sewer flow test, so we understand um, A E COM has broken the system down into eight parts and they're, we're concentrating on the whole entire sewer district. But when we go back in for the sewer manhole um, investigations, those are concentrated into two of the district or two of the um, areas that we had broken up because I think that those are the, a little bit more of the um, um, the red, not red flags, but those are the areas where we're noticing the most inflow. And so those would be the areas that we first as part of phase one want to be able to address because the idea is that this is going to be four phases. So this is not going to be the last time.
What is the S S E S program? Is is this something?
Part of this whole influent infiltration program in order to address.
The New Canaan thing or this is a a program that's typically found in other
Oh, oh, yes.
municipalities.
Yeah, it's found, yes, it's found all over and A E COM is, you know, one, one of the best. We've been working, there there are consultants and we've been working with them for years. Um, and they're doing a great job and they've done this for other municipalities as well.
We believe they're ended it last year or the year before.
And so this is phase one. Will there be any phase two? Will that include just a a broader area that you're going to?
These two will involve more investigation, but not smoke testing. All the smoke testing we're doing as part of phase one. Okay.
And what's the spend for phase two, three, and four projected?
So Tiger, you probably have a little better of a pulse on on the budget for that.
We had uh, four phases of five hundred thousand dollars each. This first phase came in under that at four oh seven eight hundred. We're hopefully anticipating that the the remaining phases will do the same, but the, we have it budgeted um, in the sewer budget for four five hundred thousand dollar years. Four phases at five hundred each.
So if the inflow problem is not from water coming in, but someone has their some pump illegally hooked up to the sanitary sewer system, that's going to, the smoke's going to come up and show that it's coming through their, there's there's some pump.
Right. So a lot of residents don't even realize because it could be in a home that they've acquired and just don't know where all their their connections are made. So that's why it's good for a resident to actually be aware of what the conditions of their own have within their own property, not just within our right of way. So yes, it could identify.
But it will.
Right.
It's going to be a
Yeah.
But would they let you know to you had smoke come up through a drain or uh, is that just for their own internal use?
Well, that's why they'll be doing, A E COM will be doing this in small, or actually um, Flow Assessment Services will be doing this in small batches because they'll be able to visibly see like going through and anytime that a resident can also identify to us, then that would just be provide further information, but we'll be able to see it through uh, the sanitary sewer vents in the house and through, um, like I said, there could be even penetrations through the ground in their lawn. But no one needs to enter into anyone's houses.
This is going to be exciting.
Well, and it's funny, they wanted to do it in August. And we we suggested late August because we know that a lot of our residents are gone in August, but come back for the school. So that's why we said late August would be better.
Okay.
After school starts?
Um.
Right around start of school time.
Okay, anybody want to vote for this?
Sure. You gonna make a motion?
I move we approve this request from Public Works to enter into a a contract with A COM for a total of uh, four hundred seven thousand dollars, eight hundred four hundred seven thousand eight hundred, which includes a ten percent contingency for the two thousand twenty-three S S E S program phase one as described by Maria.
Second.
For the discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Wow. Good morning, Bill.
Morning, everybody. Good morning. So this is a a request to um, retain a contract, a uh, Mercredi Engineering to uh, design the docking stations for both the town hall annex and the town hall. Um, this uh, goes in conjunction with the portable generator we just purchased last year so that we can uh, uh, have the docking station for emergency backup here. Should this generator fail, the annex does not have a generator, but it'll have a docking station that um, if power goes out, we just hook generator that building and that building become uh, usable building during uh, during emergencies.
So this is just for the design. The the actual docking stations are going to cost what? Like it's going to cost at the police department or at the thirty-nine locust?
Um, I I don't know yet. Um, that's why we have the engineers on board. Uh, we have to a lot to go through because it's a little complicated because we have the town um, generator here, which has a lot of transfer switches to figure out what kind of switch here we may need. There also may be enough room on this generator to actually not only light up this building, but to light up that building too without using the portable. So we want to do some investigation work and what have you and then um, build a scope and then uh, budget it out and then uh,
Has this, has this generator ever failed in the five years, six years it's been operating?
Not yet. I hope you jinxed it. It fired up last night and I got notified right away. And um, I was in communication with everybody, police, everybody when the power went out last night. And that's why I think the traffic, I knew the traffic was out. I think that's a state problem.
Yep. Where would the docking station be located for the annex?
Probably behind the building and between the building, the fence where the air conditioning equipment is. It's not very big. Um, if you go up the middle parking lot, there's actually a bump out there with a little wall and a fence. And that's where the air conditioning equipment is. We probably put it back there. So it would be out of sight.
Again, this is just for design.
Mm-hmm.
Engineering work.
Mm-hmm.
Now, for the questions, I move we approve this request from Public Works to enter into a contract with Mercredi Consulting Engineers in the total amount of thirteen thousand four forty as described by Bill for this uh,
Second here.
For the discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Good morning. Okay, so we we have three things. Um, the first one, a little bit confusing. So these are our zero-turn mowers. So in the twenty-four budget, we have one that we'd like to purchase for the twelve thousand five. In the twenty-three budget, you approved back in October to purchase from a different company, but when we contacted them for pricing for another mower, they said we won't honor the purchase order anymore because we're no longer handling Hustler. So what we'd really like to do is purchase two mowers at the twelve thousand five hundred. Um, in the present year's budget, there is twelve thousand five hundred. And last year's in twenty-three budget, there's only eleven five hundred. So we would also take a thousand dollars out of our operating budget for equipment repairs and maintenance. So what we're really looking for is to purchase two zero-turn mowers from Goffs Equipment Services.
I need to do the others.
Okay. The the second item is um, to purchase a Kubota R T V uh, X eleven hundred from Con Con Tractor and Equipment in North Franklin. This, this is on a purchasing agreement and it's actually, their price is below what the source well agreement amount is. We have a feeling this is one of those pieces of equipment that wasn't available for a long time. They were saying six months or more. That's opened up. They've Kubota has started manufacturing them. Um, and we think they've ordered more than what they have sales for. So that's why they, that's why we believe they've lowered it in. We'd also be trading in the the existing one, um, which is over ten years old and is actually out of service right now um, for six thousand dollars. And then we had a contingency of two thousand. So that purchase price would be eighteen four ninety-four and ninety-seven, which is under the twenty-five thousand dollar budget in amount. And then the last one is a Bobcat Skid steer. This we use for anything from moving snow and salt, et cetera, in the wintertime. Moving pallets of whatever type of materials. And this is to replace an existing one, which is over fifteen years old. Um, it's also under source well purchasing agreement. So the purchase price would be fifty-one thousand two twenty-eight seventy and with the trade-in of thirteen thousand of the existing one and then accessories, meaning a new bucket forks, that type is to death, um, thirteen thousand three fifty-nine twenty-one. And we also put in a contingency of twenty thousand dollars. So the total price would be fifty-four thousand seven forty-five thirty and we have seventy thousand in the twenty-four.
So John, what was the contingency on the Bobcat?
The the contingency on some of the accessories, there's a chance that the price could go up before they come in in the next.
What's the amount of the contingency?
Oh, two thousand dollars. I'm sorry.
So so all three of these things, putting putting aside the twenty twenty-two approval in October. These are all in the budget?
They're all in the budget. The Bobcats in the twenty-four budget, the Kubota is actually in the twenty-three budget. We didn't, we didn't go come forward earlier because they were just not available.
And the, and we've already approved another Hustler Super Z.
Yes. Yes, you approved the one back in October.
At eleven, at eleven-five and now they've upped it to twelve-five.
Twelve-five, different company.
Okay.
But it's still under the a purchasing agreement. Okay, so.
Got it.
And these are for the Parks Department?
These are for the Parks Department, yes.
Not the Parks and Recreation Department. Any further questions?
None.
I move we approve the request for these three items, the Goffs Equipment Hustler, the Con Tractor Equipment Kubota R T V X eleven hundred and the Bobcat uh, it steer loader S sixty-six for the amounts as described by John. Second?
Second, but the the, sorry, the the minutes will just show that actually it's twelve-five plus another twelve-five.
Right, yes, please.
Okay, thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. It's a morning we have here.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, so I'm here today for the temporary police department uh, fit out at thirty-nine Locusts. So the Department of Public Works and the Police Department Building Committee is requesting authorization for Turner Construction to enter into the following contracts to convert thirty-nine Locust Avenue to a temporary police department facility. So um, Turner Self-Perform Group will perform the general trades package, which includes the demolition and removals, uh, the partitions, sealings. The partitions, ceilings, door frames and hardware installation. Installation of the previously approved long lead time items such as the bullet resistant assemblies. Installation of security devices, cutting and patching of the flooring. Limited painting of the new walls. So this is Turner's Self-Perform Group. Would perform this work and their estimated cost is a hundred and thirty-eight thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars. The doored frames and hardware package would be purchased through various vendors, whoever we can get available. Product from, their their amount is estimated at twelve thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars. And this would all be purchased through Turner. MEP allowance to cover all the kind of the nits and nats of of moving around walls. Relocating lights, HVAC sprinklers and everything affected by all the the new walls and office layouts. Basically to convert this. Board of Education building to a police department facility. So the various mechanical, electrical plumbing trades is estimated as an allowance of sixty thousand dollars. We're gonna go and and we have to actually start to poke our heads above the ceiling and and look and and to. Find where we're gonna have to relocate some stuff, but it's very minimal. We're just putting up walls to below the ceiling. So it's just a matter of getting air from like one side of the room to the other, or if a sprinkler head is too close, just to relocate it. So it's a very. Simple project, but it's again, it's just like a lot of, a lot of little tiny things. And then there's also specialties, which is the awnings, window shades and vinyl window covering. That's twenty-two thousand. Six hundred and forty-five, that, six hundred and forty-five dollars. So these orders will all be purchased through Turner under. Our existing CM contract. These items are all within budget and the funds are available. So the Department of Public Works is requesting approval. To increase Turner Construction's contract value by the, by the sum of the items above, which is two hundred and thirty-three thousand. Eight hundred and three dollars.
Any questions?
So can you just remind us, so the owner of this building, they have, do they have to approve all of this to the? Door frames and hardware and so forth. And I assume we get none of this back when we.
Right, so, so I met with them. We'd had a preliminary meeting, they wanted to walk through it once again. He said that we may have to remove, because one of the things that we're doing is we're putting up basically like another. Vestibule as you come off of the stairway or the elevator to to make a secure area. So some of those things wouldn't be of any value to him in the future, so that, so our our lease would be to, would be to either remove them. So it's either we remove them or he agrees to just leave them, leave them be when we leave.
Okay. So he's approved this?
He, yes, he will, he will approve. He will approve it or we'll, or we'll remove it.
Okay.
So Joe, you said we're increasing the existing contract?
So the way that, so similar to the last one, basically authorizing Turner to expend these dollars underneath the existing contract. It's the same value. There was already a budget approved. We have one point, you know, nine five million. For this temporary police department relocation, it's funded from, from that location. So as the way that the CM agreement works, we just authorize them. The next big authorization would be. After the, the overall project is bid, we'll come back and and ask for the guaranteed maximum price to be approved and everything will be rolled in. This particular item wouldn't be rolled in because it's a separate budget, but it's within the, it's within the line item budgets that we've carried.
No further questions, I move, we approve this request from Public Works and the the Building Committee. To enter into a contract with Turner Construction for the additional amount of two hundred and thirty-three thousand eight hundred and three dollars for the various fit out needs as described by Joe at thirty-nine Locust. Second?
Second here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Back. Okay, the first item here to, over at the EMS building. Along the southern side, there's a wood fence along there that's. We've been patching up for a few years now. It's rotted out on the post and been falling over. And there's money in the budget to install a new fence along there. Ganning Rustic Fence has done much work for the town, has done great work. And we would seek approval to contract and to install a new fence there. And we like to get that done this summer, fall before the police department work starts so that. We don't have problems with fencing with the neighbors and everything once the site work begins and. Don't have to be on the same site with. Police department contractors, we get it all done. How old is the? Existing fence? I don't know exactly, I can only speculate that it was, might have been installed when they did the ambulance building. Because it. It's in tough shape? Yeah, well, yeah, it's rotted out at the post, so it keeps falling over. Unfortunately, with the weather and the winter, the snow is always along that area, tends to be a little bit more wet. In the bu, in the budget, Billy? Excuse me? Is it in the budget? Yes, sir.
Okay. So the other, other side of the fence is a residence, is that right?
Yes.
And so have they had their approval?
No, I don't think so. We're just, we're placing in kind of the same thing in the same.
Is it stockade fence or they're?
It's a cedar. I guess it's stockade, not stockade, it was a cedar panel fence.
They can't see through it?
No, they cannot see through it. The exact same fences there, we're just taking the old one out. How high is it? Excuse me? How high is it, Bill? I believe they're six feet.
Okay, thank you.
I move that we approve this request from Public Works to enter to a contract with Gannon Rustic Fence for a total of seventeen thousand two forty-four. Includes a contingency for the replacement of the cedar fence as described by Bill for the EMS building, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the long anticipated playoff theater project. As y'all know, it's been a long road to get here and we're happy we're here. So we, earlier on in the project, you you guys approved the. Design build with Alden Bailey and worked with our architectural firm of. Architectural Preservation Studios. And also along the way, we had Hobbs, Ian Hobbs join our team and with his. His people to review the project and the scope and the cost. We went through all those exercises in the Hobbs team. We had many meetings and they interviewed all the players involved here, contractors, subcontractors, they went through all the numbers. And they presented to the Board of Finance earlier this month and attended town council last week. Town council seemed to be pretty pleased with the, with the findings that the Hobbs organization presented. They also was, Hobbs also assisted us with getting to this number with Alden Bailey, we sat down with him, went through it. And so we feel that we're in a really good position now to ask for approval to contract Alden Bailey to, it's good to work on going.
Did Hobbs produce a report?
I believe they're gonna be working on a report. Tiger was talking to him last, but I can follow up. Is Hobbs group gonna represent their written report, Tiger?
He'll be putting together the document for us and for you. But they reviewed every, every number that had been presented and they were comfortable with, with the numbers as presented as far as the scope of work. And the remaining, whatever remaining unknowns that we might have, they were very comfortable with going forward at this point in time with. With Alden Bailey and the subcontractors that we had on board at the pricing that you see.
And does this cover everything now in terms of the, the going forward with the project? What, if anything, in addition to the four million, would we be seeing? Complete the project?
The exterior work.
Well, the exteriors, this is all the interior work to fit out any exterior. I know Tiger's already got money to do the sidewalks.
Right.
And I think I'm kind of holding it back on that because we want to get this going and to make sure we have our elevation before he finishes that piece of sidewalk in the front. Eventually, there'll be some work in the alleyways and behind the building to clean everything up to make it presentable. What was the original estimate? Do you keep reminding me? So.
Just under four million, three point nine nine five, I believe.
Yes, that's correct. So we're a hundred percent over budget or is it a hundred and twenty or a hundred and four? I've heard somebody said it might be upwards of a hundred and fifty percent over budget.
No, we're, we're, if you, if you.
Only a hundred percent over budget?
If you consider that that was a, you know, the the scope of work has completely changed from what that budget was, so you can't really necessarily say that we're a hundred percent over budget.
That's, when you say the scope of work has changed, that's because of the HVAC issues, Tiger. Trying to get my hands around, and and maybe this will be addressed in the report that we're all looking forward to. But I mean, this is a huge miss on our part.
I wouldn't consider it a miss. It was effective, what was, what changed as far as codes and the building itself. You know, in in speaking with both the designer, the contractor and Hobbs Incorporated. If we had gone the normal bidding process, one, we would have had to stop and two, the costs would have been more.
Total design and build is the way to go.
Correct.
I'm, I'm, I've had a lot of people come up to me and say that that's a disaster, you know, this is not. A good, a good effective way to.
That's, that's according to the contractor, all contractors involved, the architect and Hobbs Incorporated.
Alden Bailey, we're talking about that contractor.
Yes.
And that, these are the guys who did Waveney, is that right?
Yeah.
Which was found to be in, not in ADA, not even close to ADA compliant, is that correct? Yeah, we're still working through it. So we keep going back to Alden Bailey. What is it about Alden Bailey? So let's separate that. They, that was bid it out, they won the bids on that, you know, with the competitor bidders. Hopefully it's fair, I don't know. And when we talk about like on the budget list, we gotta keep in mind that we ran into so many unknown elements. Unforeseen elements of the playoffs during this selected demo that drove a lot. Why were they unforeseen? It was worked on over the years, a hundred year old building that we weren't aware of. But didn't, did we not do the due diligence? We, that was. Part of due diligence. Municipality.
Part of the due diligence, part of the due diligence was to take the goals down.
Budget and and I don't know, you know, everybody's like, oh, this is great, town council's happy, we're happy, then what? Where's the responsibility here? Well, I think, you know, when we went into this, some of the due diligence was doing a selective demo, that's why we did it, to understand what was going on in some elements of the building. We discovered there was at least two renovations, one back way back in the sixty seventies and then the big one in eighties. Which I can't find no documents at this town hall of the contractor who did the work, but he did a lot of damage to the building. And we weren't, weren't, we did not know that until we started removing some of those elements and discover all the structural issues that they created. And when you get to structural elements that have been compromised, it gets to be pricey to fix it, to get it back. That was one driver. Yes, HVAC was another driver that we had to redo the whole HVAC system. So those, those are your two drivers, but the structural element of it was huge.
How much of this portion is covered by our partner? In in terms of the, I I know the infrastructure of the town is supposed to take on responsibility, but wasn't there an agreement with Cinema Lab? That they were going to take on a certain amount over a threshold? And if so, are they stepping up for any of this?
Well, we're still.
Still under negotiation?
No, they.
Not much, we've, we've got a, we've got a. An agreement with them.
We have an agreement with them, for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Three fifty.
Yeah.
And then they also have one point five five million dollars going into all the finishes.
NE, right, right.
And that's separate from this because that's, they own that.
Right.
They may. We may work, we're probably gonna work with them because we want to make sure it's done properly. We'll be using their money. We may be managing our end, maybe not all the elements, but some of the bigger elements, because there's some crossover there. So there's some negotiations going on back and forth, but Hobbs is very aware of that. Hobbs has also had Cinema Lab up here several times. For interviews, not only with them, but with their subcontractors of installing certain elements of the AV, the AV equipment and. Screens and what have you. So everybody's been up, talked to Hobbs, went through this, we separated it all out.
Okay.
So what we're presenting right here is the contract, what we're responsible for, for the infrastructure and the backbone of the building itself. And the ADA complacency and bill and code complacency. Look, it. I'm looking forward to seeing this to completion. It's really fun to be working with, you know, the queen's nephew and all that stuff. But financially, this has been an unmitigated disaster. I think we can all agree.
What's the timing in terms of completion? Has it changed at all?
Yes, it has. It's not gonna be for Christmas, it's gonna be. Christmas of twenty-four? I hope you for that spring, springtime, we're gonna try, we're gonna try to do our best, but at this point. Why was, why was this so rushed, Bill? Any, any clues? I don't know. I mean, I think some people have expectations trying to get it done for a hundred year anniversary, have it done as a grand. Election year, maybe that was something, had something to do with it. Never came into any kind of conversation. Okay. Never came in that conversation that I was at. So I think it was more the one hundred year anniversary, the one hundred year anniversary is actually October seventh. You know, and that would have been nice to do, but we, we just.
It's a whole year celebration, so.
Well, we can celebrate the first year of the new birth of the building, you know, I mean, right now, I'd rather be a day late and get it right than to rush and get it wrong, so. Yeah, no, no, no more rushing. We need to slow things down. I agree with you. Be fiscally responsible. This is a disaster.
Any further questions? I move, we approve this request from Public Works to enter into a contract with Alden Bailey Restoration for the total amount four million dollars. Four million eighty-four, three eighteen eighty-one, as described by Bill, which includes a contingency for the. Interior renovation, full interior renovation of the. New Canaan Playhouse building, so, second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is Ryan.
We are here to present the removal of Stefano Di Frederico from probationary status. And I thought I would have Ryan give a little follow up.
Yeah, Stefano's been a great addition to the team. He's eager to learn, he's attended Park and Rec meetings. Has earned certifications on his own. And we actually had some public reach out to us commenting and praising his work, so that was some members of the baseball board, so. He's been a great addition.
Great, remind us that, what's his title and his position?
He's a groundsman two currently.
Groundsman two, yes. Great.
Any further questions? I move, we approve this request from resources to remove Stefano Di Frederico from probationary status, second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Thank you.
Tiger, are you doing the tree work?
I'll do the next two items, Kevin. Yes, thank you. Good morning. So this first item is a blanket purchase orders for our six tree vendors that are on our emergency call list. Last year, our expenditures ranged per vendor from eleven thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars to a high of forty-five thousand six hundred and ninety-one. And it really comes down to the fact of who's on call for that week and what work needs to be done or what work that we, that we see that might come in as far as a storm or what have you. So this year, we'd like to have, last year, we did a purchase order of ten thousand dollars for each. This year, we'd like to up that to twenty thousand dollars since that's the average between all the vendors. So we'd like to have a blanket purchase order of twenty thousand dollars each for each of the six vendors. And then as we roll through the budget, we'll either have to amend it up or down accordingly, and we can bring that to your attention as we go forward. The money is budgeted in our current fiscal twenty-four budget, and I'm happy to take any questions if you have.
Any questions?
Yeah, just, as, as they're set up as purchase orders, what does that mean? That they actually receive the twenty thousand?
No, they don't receive the twenty thousand, it's on a billable nature, but it's a blanket up and up to twenty thousand dollars. Without it, I can't pay them. I can't pay without a purchase order and I need authorization from you for anything over ten thousand dollars.
Right, okay. Thank you for the reminder.
No problem.
I move, we approve this request from Public Works and the Tree Warden to create six purchase orders in the amount of twenty thousand dollars each for the. Six. What are these firms called? Arborist?
Tree contractor.
The contractors. For the emergency tree work as described by Tiger, second?
Second here.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. This next one is for our July twentieth bid. It went out to the six vendors that that we mentioned. You are only allowed to bid on our projects if you're willing to take a turn at the wheel as far as responding to emergencies for us. We received only one bid at present from Almstead Tree Care. Tree Warden reviewed the bid, he's comfortable with the numbers, it's for ten separate locations in town. The majority of them are removals of ash trees that'll continue for quite some time, as we've mentioned before. But Almstead's done very nice work for us in the past, and we'd like to go forward with this contract at twenty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Any questions?
Not here.
I move, we approve the request from the Tree Warden to enter into a contract with Almstead Tree as described by Tiger for twenty-seven thousand five fifty-two. For the removal, pruning and stump removal of various trees in town, second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Morning, Ian.
Good morning. The first one that I have is the volunteer tax abatement. As you know, we give up to two thousand dollars a year on it. Um, we've received, uh, twenty or thirty-eight applications to date. We had eight fire and thirty EMS. We have, um, twenty-nine as residents and the remainder of, um, out of town, which are Fairfield, Greenwich, Norwalk and Stamford. So we're in front of you now to ask for the approval. We're in front of you now to ask for the approval so that we can go ahead and get the taxes addressed.
Any questions?
So just as a reminder, so what was the total last year? Yeah.
Oh, I didn't get that. I'll email.
No, that's okay, but.
It was around the same because we split it up into two portions last year, but it is around the same, around the six, just under seventy thousand.
And does this show up as taxable income to the recipient?
It does, and I actually looked up the IRS rules on that, um, for, because that, that was a concern because of, uh, checks that we've cut in the past. The IRS exempts this, um, well, technically the state would say it's taxable, but because the state follows the federal law, which says it's non-taxable. Um, the, the state has something on their site that says you do not tax these for, um, fire EMS. So I got that clearance and made sure I had that in place first.
State will always tax whatever it can.
Yeah, but they do, they do typically follow from a, um, ten, they said ten ninety-nine or W two, it doesn't go on. It actually.
We don't issue a ten ninety-nine.
We don't issue a ten ninety-nine on them. We, we shouldn't. I can't speak to the past, but we shouldn't. And anyone, I've changed the process, anyone that is a resident, we don't cut checks. I just transfer the money to the tax collector. She puts it on their account and they're done. We just do the, the few checks for the other towns.
Right, that's good. Okay, so thank you.
I move, we approve this request. For someone.
Anne.
Finance?
Anne.
Um, for the abatement of, uh, real and personal property taxes and, uh, per the property tax abatement and other benefits to volunteer first responders. Um, policy. Second?
Second here.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Next one is, um, the POs for the finance department. The first one is O'Connor Davies, our audit fee. That went through the normal process where it has to go all the way through and get approved by the, uh, town council. So that went through on that. It's, it's a hundred and three thousand dollars. Southwestern Communication, it's our dispatching. Um, it's sixty-one thousand. Obviously it's over the fifty thousand threshold for bidding, but because this is the sole source for this area, um, this one is an automatic that we are involved in. Tyler Technology, that's our, um, munis system that we go with every year. Um, so that's forty-eight thousand dollars and CCM again, another, you know, it's a state related organization that we, we, um, are joined into. So I would be looking for approval on all these and all the money is in place.
I'm confused by the dispatching. Why is that finance?
It, it doesn't, we pay it. It comes out of a different budget, but it comes under finance to manage it. So I just, I put it under finance.
Question? I move, we approve these requests from finance to, uh, enter into purchase orders for the four amounts as described by, uh, Ian. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next one, um, so the health department had gotten a car last year. And they put a request in for twenty-three for, or for twenty-four for another car. But, um, they had residual funds left over from last year. They wanted to use. But you can't from bonding rules, authorization, you can't switch from one year to another. You can switch internally in the same year, in the same authorization, but you can't switch years. So what we're proposing to do is to, within the resolution, the previous resolution, take the savings from that vehicle and put it to another project in that resolution that has the same authorization in twenty-four. So we're going to take it from health and put it to another project and then in twenty-four, take it from that project and move it to health. That's the way you can legally do it so that we don't lose those funds and we can buy the second vehicle and the other project is not impacted. It's just where the funds are sitting in one year. So, um, in the authorization, it gives the board a selectmen, each authorization that we have gives the board a selectmen, the approval to make those movements internally within the same year, but you can't do it year over year.
Very clear.
Well, I'll break, so what I did, I'll do, based on the, on the, on the, what you have here, so the health department had savings. Signage and striping is something that DPW uses every single year. We had to, we had to work with a project that happens every year. So what we did was we took the savings from the health department for the last year authorization, put it into signage and striping and up their budget. So now we kept it whole within that year and we took the savings from the health to Public Works on that one. In twenty-three, because that's where we want to buy the vehicle, we took it from signage, the same amount and gave it to the health department. So they have enough to buy the vehicle. Both still have the exact same amount year over year, but it's all in one year now.
So.
We're fixing. To do it legally, yes, because we can't flip years in bonding. You can't take a twenty-three or twenty-two and put it to twenty-three. You can move twenty-two to twenty-two.
Yeah.
And you can move twenty-three to twenty-three. So we switched it in twenty-two, reversed it in twenty-three.
Okay.
Um, and the authorization allows the board of selectmen to do that. It's, it's stated in the authorization.
Take your word for it.
I went through bond council too.
Yeah.
Hopefully, just so you know, the bond council is aware, um, to make sure that this was okay.
Okay. Thank you.
I move, we approve this request from finance to, um, move on premium transfers as described by Anne. Second?
Second here.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Now, this is a discussion. We're not going to take action today on this because we're still debating which way to go, um, but. Stacy?
So yes, we're in discussion to, um, adjust the renewal period of our current commuter permit holders due to the New Canaan Ranch Line shutdown. Uh, in addition, uh, the priority waitlist holders who put their permits on the hold status for two years that is also set to expire on August thirty-first and to discuss, uh, extending that due to the shutdown as well.
Why don't you explain a little more?
Oh.
What's going on here?
So basically, uh, the shutdown, uh, started, uh, beginning of June. It's set to hopefully end by the beginning of September, which means our current permit holders' permits are set to expire August thirty-first, set to renew September first. Uh, the plan recommendation discussion would be to extend the expiration date out three months, which would bring it to an expiration date of November thirtieth with the renewal date of December first. At that point, we would renew the permits for the current twenty twenty-four year at a prorated amount for nine months left in the permit year. So we would stay on schedule um, to renew again the following permit year on a September first basis.
What's the income impact, revenue impact?
Uh, so currently we have, um, seven hundred and one permit holders. That would depend on what our fees would be. Uh, right now our permits are, uh, full year six sixty-three, sixty-two, so actually a base rate of, uh, six hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Okay.
So to let you know, if we stayed at that current rate, uh, for the, um, so we would do it because six hundred and twenty-four would only be for the lumberyard. So we have currently four hundred and twenty-two lumberyard permit holders. So that would be two hundred and sixty-three thousand three hundred and twenty-eight. If we were to prorate it again for the three months, it would be at four sixty-eight. So if we were to do that, um.
This is twenty-five percent of your total.
We, we would be at a loss of about nineteen thousand dollars if we kept everything the same as, um, the fees the same as we have for the last few years.
And did you say, I'm sorry, did you say this would only apply to lumberyard permit holders?
No, it would apply to Townmanchill and Richmond Hill, but their rates are different.
I see.
Uh, their rates are a little bit less, six twenty-four for lumberyard, four seventy-four for Richmond and Townmanchill. So that, that little loss would be a little bit less. So probably overall, maybe about thirty thousand if we were to extend it and then do the prorated amount.
So the, the issue here is that, um, since a lot of our parkers, our commuters have gone to Darien stations and other stations and paid. It's not really fair to charge them for the three months they haven't had. And we have like ninety-eight percent of our commuters are going somewhere. Um, so a few, very few people are using their parking spots.
Mm-hmm.
Um, two years ago, we went from July one to September one for our renewals.
Yes.
And, um, and the question is, what was discussed with the parking commission at their June meeting? June meeting?
The June meeting.
They don't meet in July. Was we just extend the permits for three months so that we kind of give back the, uh, but the problem with that is next year, then when then we're off schedule in terms of renewals.
Hmm.
Like, we'd like to keep it at September one. So that, so what we're trying to, and by the way, the indications from Metro North are that, uh, their, their work is, is on schedule and will be completed by Labor Day. So there's no expectation we're going beyond Labor Day. So the, but the idea of, that wasn't discussed with the parking commission because we were a little, talking about just extending for three months,
Mm-hmm.
which will put us into a December renewal next year, which we don't want to do, would be to adjust the amount that we're going to charge.
That's what I was gonna say.
So.
So still have the renewal September third.
Right.
But be a third off.
Yeah, we probably would, would make it effective, you know, people could decide by October first with an effective date of September first. So we stay, because it really makes sense to keep this out of, uh, a post-summer.
Operationally.
Operationally.
Yeah.
Um, but we, so the parking commission will meet when?
August second.
August second. Um.
They'd have to bring the fees to that meeting, the fee discussion.
Yeah, so we, so, so my inclination is to say, let's, let's go with a, a three-quarter year fee. We're giving them, we're giving ninety-eight percent of the deal back.
Yeah.
One quarter.
Yeah.
It is an impact on revenues, but it's fair. So. Um, I, I propose we take this up on August eighth and, um, actually vote on a adjusted fee schedule for. But, um, we wanted to get, send the signal that we plan to, uh, to do something to reimburse people for the.
Because they've paid through.
They paid through September one.
So what have people been doing? Because we've been, I think, as a town, completely ineffective in trying to get parking in Darien and whatever. And so people just not going into the office or what is?
We're, we're.
People taking the, the buses?
We're fighting, well, not many people are taking the buses. That, that's probably the lowest.
How many commuters?
I'm sorry?
How many commuters?
Not many commuters.
On, on the four express trains, you know, commuters are almost nonexistent. It's the workers that come into Canaan and the, and the restaurant workers come, you know.
That, yeah, but we're, we're finding that the majority of people are probably, uh, are going to Darien and utilizing that train station first, then Narroton Heights.
And they're paying eight dollars a day and twelve dollars a day at various places.
If they can get the four dollars a day, uh, spaces, then they're, they're using that
Right.
as well. But that is the main direction that they're going in.
And to be clear, um, the more limited train schedule will continue, will, will be in effect in September, right?
No, no, no. Labor Day, they're going back. On the other hand, we've heard, right.
I, I thought, I thought that we're going to continue that, cutting back.
They're cutting back somewhat on service.
The last I heard as well.
On the main line, we haven't heard those schedules yet, but they're.
Aren't they? Yeah, the schedule update, but.
But that's kind of a separate issue from the summer shutdown for the New Canaan branch. So again.
And who in New Canaan is speaking to Metro North? Is it that you, Kevin, or is that, I mean?
Tucker is, Bob is.
Tucker.
And, and Stacy, we, we all, we developed friends at DOT, which we never had before.
It's better than enemies, so it's.
Better than what?
I said it's better than enemies.
Well, again, DOT, um, is a hard, like all the state branches to deal with it, um. They actually plan these buses. I, you know, they've scheduled, they've contracted for all these buses that are not, a lot of them are not used, but.
Feedback on the buses we're getting is it's taking a lot less than what was normally.
Yeah.
What was previously.
You mean the time?
Time period to get to Stanford. Yes.
So that's a good thing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Let's be positive about this. Okay, good.
Sorry, we'll take this up on August eighth as, as a vote.
Yeah.
Well, it's good to hear that they're on schedule. That's the most important.
Good to hear they're on schedule. Okay, thanks Stacy.
So much.
Contracts under ten? Any? Comments or?
Was it just four? I, there wasn't like a summary. Okay, CJ said the four, yeah.
Pam was on, Pam was on vacation.
Yes, no problem.
Nothing there? Um, appointments, we have a, uh, two sets of appointments, one to the Inland Wetlands Commission, Adam Ramirez and Sandy Redden, um, for alternate, uh, for two-year terms ending December one. And then Constable Albert Gonzalez, uh, for a two-year term ending November, which is elected position and will be, uh, it'll be on the ballot for the November election. Any questions or I move, we approve those appointments?
I'll.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The, um, is, are there any other appointments that are in queue? I thought the DTC had, I think, um, I'd received an email.
This one for the inland wetlands was in the queue. Is there another one?
No, there was, I think there was another one. I, I apologize, I don't.
There's only alternate positions, which are spare tires and a lot of people don't even.
Alternate on ZDA, um, for review, for commission, district commission, well, that. And, um, fine.
Quite a few.
What's, what's holding things up?
We don't have.
Who's, who's holding things up?
We don't have candidates. Anyway, so, um, I don't have any comments. Just like my comments. We, actually, we, we have to, I'm sorry, we have to take up before we move to.
Yeah, yeah.
Comments, the, uh.
I, I have a comment, so stop talking, please. Um.
We, we have.
That our, our next.
We haven't got into comments yet. We got to take up the urgent assessment program contract, which is.
You want to do that now?
Item we added.
Fine.
So the urgent assessment program, um, both the town and the Board of Education are, are contributing fifty thousand dollars toward the second year. The community foundation is contributing and the town of Weston is contributing. So the, uh, the contract, which we basically took last year's agreement and modified it, uh, in, in cooperation with the town of Weston, we have the same town attorney. Um, so that, anybody questions about the agreement, I move, we approve the agreement.
Second here.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So we, before we go into executive session, we have selectmen comments, but as I said, I have no comments.
So on the, um, outstanding appointments that still, still need to be filled, um, there was also a conversation at the, um, Board of, excuse me, Board of Education about the opening in, on that board and coming to the Board of Selectmen. I haven't heard anything more on that and I was wondering if there's any update that you could provide and where it stands.
I've heard from Katrina Parkhill that the, uh, Board of Education deadline is tonight. Or last night? Last night? Um, and since they didn't take action, it reversed to us, but there's, you know, uh.
So how, how should we handle that?
I don't know. I think by, by August eighth, we might have a better indication as to what we might do, but I haven't had any discussions with anybody really other than Katrina to tell us this is probably going to revert to us.
Could we revert it back to them or, uh, is that an option?
But honestly, I haven't done the research to understand, uh, whether we should take action, um, whether we should leave it vacant. I don't, I'm not sure there's a way to send it back to them.
But, okay, so it's something to, let's, let's dig into that maybe before the August eighth, um, meeting and then in terms of the openings, it seems to be quite a few. And if you'd be kind enough, um.
You mean, Kathy, you mean the commissions, the commissions?
I'm sorry?
You, you talking about the commissions?
Boards and commissions, yeah. Um, I'm wondering whether or not, and again, this is for discussion.
But you know, we, we're waiting candidates from the RTC and the DTC, so we're not going to.
I think the DTC has submitted there.
I don't think the RTC has. Christina, again, it's not, it's not clear always, you know, a replacement is from that party. It could be from another party.
So if we can get a list of what's, what is open and what you're expecting from which party, et cetera.
And when the submission was made.
Yeah, so, um, because that seems a lot. And the, and I guess one of the questions I'd have is, does it make sense to wait until we go through, uh, the election season before we make these appointments? I'd rather do it what now? I mean, these have been open positions for quite some time and so, uh, but anyway, if there's, if there are, and I know that there have been submissions, um, we should take them up. I don't think we have to wait till some other position is filled. And along those same lines, um, there's been a lot of conversation about the Affordable Housing, um, Commission. Is it Commission or Committee? Is it a committee? Anyway, committee. Um, and there's a lot, a lot of discussion. We, I have yet to see the list of potential candidates. And as you know, as we went through for the Utilities Commission, the three of us had an opportunity to interview, uh, those who were put forward before us. And again, it's the summertime and there's not a lot of time to do that. We're anxious to get that Affordable Housing Committee in place. And so, uh, Steve Carl had indicated in a note to us that he's going to, he and Tom Butterworth are going to bring, uh, forwards and names and so forth so that we can begin, but I haven't seen anything yet. Um, so I, I'm just, just making a comment that I'm hopeful that we'll see that soon so we can begin the, uh, interview process. So I haven't seen anything though.
I haven't seen anything.
You haven't either.
I've gotten six, maybe, um, discreet recommendations from various people, including the DTC. I've gotten six, maybe um discreet recommendations from various people, including the DTC. And the RTC, but you know, we don't have a list and we don't, I was waiting for Steve Carl and Tom to come and talk.
So are they, they're responsible for pulling together all of the recommendations or?
No, you know, you know, quite honestly, this is our responsibility, not the town council.
Okay.
Like the audit committee, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
It's um, it's something that's uh, we'll take recommendations from anywhere, including non-GTC and non-RTC recommendations, so.
Okay, so um maybe if Tucker, do we have a current list of people that have submitted their application? Um, or their consideration?
Not not on this, Pam has been.
Unaffordable house.
Unaffordable house, yeah, yeah.
Even Tom, so should we be taking?
Again.
Responsibility for this, so.
It's it's our responsibility.
Yes, so.
So we make all appointments, I I'm happy to take recommendations from the town council, but. Once they create a new committee, it's our responsibility to.
Well, so perhaps like we did for the Utilities Commission is that we make sure that we publicly say that we're encouraging people to submit their. Uh, indication of interest for the Affordable Housing Committee so that we can review that. Yes, that we've publicly stated that, um I'd love to see this actually on our website. Uh, of going forward for any open positions, but this is, and this is a good place to start, but I I obviously we want to get going on this as well, and so if there is a list. Love to see it. So we can begin that review process.
There is no list.
There is no list, okay, I know that the DTC submitted four names, so.
Uh, there's been a series of emails from different people, some of this.
So it's difficult to just. Call somebody's emails and figure out the names.
I'm the coordinator.
You're the coordinator.
Mickey Mouse.
When we get to it and uh.
Well, uh, let's, let's try to get to it by our next meeting, that'd be great.
So Kevin, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that, that's the, that's the only thing I have, thank you.
I was just gonna bring up, I I I'm hearing. Rumors about we may be having a new hire. In 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 town hall, a so-called project manager that's gonna help Tiger. Uh, with the numerous. Public Works projects. That are in place, is that? A rumor that's unfounded or is there something there, there, Kevin?
I don't deal in rumors, so.
So, so that's not, that's incorrect. It's un- unfounded? I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said, you mumbled.
I said I don't deal in rumors.
Okay, but can you answer my question?
This is a time for comments, I, you know.
Okay, okay, so at our next meeting, I think, I'm gonna, I'm gonna propose a hiring freeze at town hall.
Nothing, I'm working on.
What, I think one position that I know that is, oh, must be open because um I actually got a call about um. Wedding planning for waveney, and I guess the our person who had been in their part-time position is no longer with us. Is that being replaced?
Eventually.
Okay, do do we have candidates for that and and obviously that's gonna be brought before the board of selectmen at the appropriate time.
I'm not sure about that, that's what we have.
There should be no hiring of anybody unless this board approves it.
Okay.
But who who does, who do people, I guess, who do people call if there's a inquiry about uh weddings?
B, B, B's.
You're doing everything, oh, okay.
B has been in charge of weddings for years, so. B Watkins.
Oh, okay, okay, oh, oh, okay.
Has been, still is, so.
Okay, all right, so with Phoebe gone, that's that turns, it reverts back to, okay, thanks, thank you for that.
Okay, executive session?
I'm not done, um Fields Commission, um Fields Committee, I'm sorry, committee, right? Committee. I'm I'm going to, at our next meeting, propose formally that we constitute the Fields Committee, cuz it appears. Based upon Tucker's research that was never done by a former Board of Selectmen. Um, we're gonna constitute it and increase the number from three to five incorporating. Two members of the public to be identified.
Any other comments? I move we go into executive session at nine forty six to discuss the item as we amended our agenda. Um, and we will come out and vote on a possibly vote on an agreement, um regarding the strategy negotiations. With respect to pending claims involving Congressional Church of New Canaan. Um, our two town attorneys are here, Tucker will stay, um. Anybody on by Zoom? For this, I don't think so.
Kevin, I'm on.
I move to.
I I made.
Go into executive session.
I made the motion.
Oh, you already did, second here.
All in favor?
Aye. We're gonna look, have Tucker, uh Tiger. I don't.
About this?
No, because we 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 told them that there'll be a joint statement.
I I think that's what they are expecting that.
Yeah, I I'm fine with that, we'll we'll work on that, we got, we got some time this afternoon, we can work on that, yeah. Look at it.
I think the agreement speaks for itself.
Okay, we've come out of executive session at ten twenty nine and um we have before us a draft agreement. Which has been shared with um the Congressional Church. Of New Canaan and um. Uh, therefore, um. We need to take a vote on this proposed agreement.
Can I just clarify that you did add the action item earlier before I came in perhaps to the agenda?
Yeah, it's there, yeah, it's there.
Well, it says possible approval, yeah.
Right.
It was put on the agenda yesterday, twenty four hours ago.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Want to describe what it is?
So are you moving the?
Do you want to describe what it is?
But I I'm not sure it was listed as a public item, uh. Which you can add, you can add to the regular.
We've amended judge, well, no, we said, we, when we. When we amended the agenda, we said impossible proven agreement coming out of executive session, we said that, right?
We said that publicly.
When we made the motion. On the amendment of the agenda, we said to go into executive session and also possible vote when we come out of executive on an agreement, we said that, didn't we?
Just to be extra clear, I I would suggest you, you just vote to add it to the public agenda as an action item.
It was.
I thought, I think, I think we all agreed, actually, maybe you weren't here in the beginning, you came in after the meeting started.
This morning, I wasn't here, yeah.
But we specifically said that.
That just has an executive.
Yeah, I think just what was published yesterday, we see possible approval under the the executive session item, so we just wanna make sure that that was moved earlier.
It was moved, moved earlier. That was moved earlier.
Okay.
Okay.
As part of the, as part of the uh. The amending of the agenda, that was, that was part of that. Motion, okay. Therefore, um again, we, um, anyone wanna move approval of this agreement?
I move that we approve. The draft agreement between the town of New Canaan and the Congressional Church of New Canaan. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
None here.
I I'll just add the very first, uh or second, whereas is that. Whereas for at least two centuries, the church, the town and New Canaan residents have honored, maintained. And enjoyed God's acre in a respectful and harmonious manner, and I feel that this agreement. Moves forward with those intentions. And so I second.
It's it's an elegant and simple solution.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Oh, thank you, okay, that's unanimous.
I move adjourned. Ten thirty two.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.